I'm going to call this meeting to order and I'll hear that story later. 1.2, we have a quorum. 1.3, meeting announcement, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. 1.4, I will now identify closed session items. Recommended expulsions, recommended review, continued expulsions, public employee assignment, reassignment appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, anticipated lift, public employee evaluation superintendent. Public comment on closed session items. General public comment and any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board will limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Any public comment? No. 1.6, we will adjourn to closed session. From the table located in the back of this meeting room, the announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Guzmora servirá como intérprete del español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación en español. Elir por audífonos al mes ubicado al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you, Ms. Mora. 3.3, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcaps, webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the meeting wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out a public comment form, the green form located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, board manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting in the table in the back of the meeting room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. Okay, it's coming. 3.4, our pledge allegiance will be led by Board Clerk Jaclyn Gabey. 5.5, report action taken in closed session. The board took the following action in closed session on a motion by Board Member Casper Saleno and a second by Board Member Gabey. The board unanimously approved the settlement agreement between the district and the parties representing OAH case number 2023 050594. 3.6, revisions to the agenda and/or closure items. These are the revised item enclosures for the agenda. 4.1, 4.5, 6.8, 6.9, 6.10, and 11.1. May I have a motion to adopt the board meeting agenda?
A second.
On a, on a motion by Board Member Naylor, second by Casper Saleno, all in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
3.7, student performance, Redwood High School Dance Group, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce our Redwood Varsity Dance Team called Dance Force, directed by Michelle Lapp. Michelle Lapp was our first dance teacher hired in the district back in 2000. That being her, so this is her 24th year at Redwood. Dance at Redwood has expanded from five sections to 10 sections. Serving a diverse population of students, dance is often the main reason for the certain groups of students to want to come to school each day to show their joy. This one, this team here has won many awards. This dance team is called Dance Force and has numerous awards. In the Believe Competition in Fresno, California, first place in hip hop and lyrical and most entertaining award. At the USA Dance Regional in Cupertino, California, they were first medium lyrical, first in large hip hop. And last but not least, at the USA Nationals in Anaheim, California, they were sixth medium lyrical, seventh in large hip hop, and seventh in soloist with Tegan Horton being that student. So overall amount, there were 70 schools there, so that's quite enough feat when they're seventh. So at this time, board and staff, would we somehow move maybe over to this side a little bit as they're going to perform out here in front of us? We'll have you guys move. And at this time, let's welcome Redwood Dance.
Welcome the Redwood High School Dance Team, Dance Force, established in 2000 under the direction of Michelle Lapp. Introducing Redwood's 2023-2024 Dance Team members. Claire, Tracy, Charis, Presley, Jocelyn, Michaela, Sadie, Jasmine, Mia, Adriana, Rosenthal, Sarah, Brooke, Haley, Mary Lee, Gwen, Matthew, Piper, Savannah, Kalen, Michaela, and Brianna.
Thank you so much. As the board comes up, parents feel free, you're more welcome to stay all evening, but if you do want to exit out, you are more than welcome to do so. We'd love to have you here, though. They moved out pretty fast. All right.
Okay. 4.1, spotlight on good things happening in the district, Superintendent Shrum.
This is safe. All right. One second. All right, we'll give it a second. So while we wait for that to come up, just again, want to echo thank you to Redwood. It is exciting to have our student performances back. As this board and community know, the reason we are here are our students. And so to highlight some of the great things happening at the start of a board meeting, to focus us on our students and while we're here is so important and great to see them back. And we also know how important our students being connected are and why that is important, right? Whether you're in a club, a sport, whatever it might be, VAPA. Students who are connected do better in school, they have better grades, better attendance, better self-esteem. And so thank you to all our teachers, our coaches, our parents that support initiatives and activities such as what we just saw. So thank you so much. Also, as we get ready to do the spotlight, want to make an acknowledgement. We're happy to have County School Board Member Tom Link here with us this evening. So I want to thank you for being here and thank you for your representation of our schools at the county level. So as we get going with our spotlight, obviously, we're back in school. So a lot of exciting things to talk about. Again, our foundation slide that highlights what we believe in, what we're committed to doing, our commitment for student learning, and soon here in the next couple of months, we'll have our strategic plan that will continue to further guide us through the upcoming years. Spotlight on schools, of course, back to school nights are underway and are wrapping up. And so you see some of the highlights there, lots of parents, lots of student family members coming out to attend, visit the campus, get to know the teacher. Also, a great opportunity to encourage our parents to volunteer, to sign up. Of course, as we've talked about before, we have a new system where it's all electronic and online. And so it's a lot easier now for parents to access how to be a visitor and a volunteer. And so we're excited about that. Also, I know this, this one just makes my heart happy. We have shared and this has been publicized, but our investment in the new turf field at Highland Elementary. Now, for those of you that have been here or been principals there or staff members there, many of our district team, you know that that's very space impacted school, right? Also in one of our most impoverished communities. And so investing over a million dollars through district and ELOT funds, they had one playing field essentially where recess occurred and everything else. And grass, of course, wouldn't grow on it and just, just not a very good space for kids to be out and playing in. And thanks to this investment, they now have a state of the art field. It is lined for baseball, for football, for whatever else, soccer. And so you see some images there, we had a grand opening a couple of weeks ago. And I just think all of our teams that made this happen. And it was just joyous to be there and see the excitement on our students' faces as they got to go out and play on this field. Speaking of connectivity happening now in our middle schools and high schools all across the, all across our district is our club rush. We have over 100 clubs available for our students. And so our middle schools hosted their club rush last month. Of course, high schools are underway and this is a great opportunity for students to connect with their peers and to get involved in things that they're interested in. Now, really excited about this, and I don't know if any of our students were able to, to make it on short notice, but this board invested in expanding our dual enrollment opportunities. And we were really excited to partner with Equity Lab, which is a national organization. And they bring dual enrollment classes through universities such as Stanford, Arizona State, Princeton, and many others to districts where maybe students without that support, without that partnership, wouldn't have that access. And so we started last year with a cloud computing class at Mount Whitney. Continue that class for the second semester. We've now expanded to Golden West as well and continuing to look to provide additional opportunities for our students. But really excited because they just released a report. And we had three students who ranked in the top nationwide in academic performance in this class. Now, I'm talking, you know, this is thousands of students nationwide taking a college level class. And three of our students, you see their names up there, Mariah, Eric, and Emmanuel, scored in the top 10 or even higher percent nationwide. And so we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge those students, acknowledge the teachers of these classes and all the students in general, just an amazing accomplishment. And I know we're going to continue to be able to recognize students every semester as we have these classes. So thank you for that. And we, again, we know the importance that students who take an advanced level class in high school, who take dual enrollment or AP, have greater opportunities, they perform better in school and are more likely to receive a post-secondary degree. And so these are things worthy of investment. And thank you to this board for expanding these opportunities. And congratulations to these students who now have performed already basically on academic dean's list honor roll, right? If you think about it in college, so congratulations. Speaking of accomplishments, we are all proud of our adult school. Many of us have had the opportunity to visit on multiple occasions and proud principal and staff have presented to this board before. And so we're very excited to talk about our adult school making some national news. They've been selected for a national research project. Staff and students will be interviewed to capture how and why this program is producing outcomes that have met or exceeded state percentages for student performance, credential completion, and employment wage outcomes to share with other programs across the state nationally, including the Department of Education. So we've known how great this work is in Visalia Unified for a while. And so it's exciting to see this work now going to be recognized on a national stage, on a state level, and for others to learn from. So congratulations to Visalia Adult School. You probably saw me tweet a little bit about this because I had a great experience, I think it was two weeks ago maybe, to finally attend SciCon. SciCon is a longstanding tradition in Tulare County and others where sixth graders go and have an amazing, you know, outdoor science-based experience. But what's powerful about this is the students spend about a week there along with teachers. And also what's really cool about it is counselors are high school students. And so it's kind, you know, they get to apply and they get to spend a week there. And when I was talking to some of the, the high school kids, they remembered, I was asking them, oh, why did you want to come spend a week with sixth graders, right? And they were like, well, they remembered, right, how great the experience was for them when they were and, you know, in school. Some wanted to be teachers, some were interested in science careers, you know, all of that. But what an amazing experience. And I got to spend the day, went on a hike with some of the kids. You see some examples of the classes doing some research there with reptiles and, and the water and everything. And I know it's hard to think about being away from families. For some of the kids, this was their first experience being away. But just what valuable skills that you learned from this. And I want everyone to think just a minute, when's the last time you or your kid went without electronics for more than maybe an hour or a day, right? You probably aren't going to be able, well, I mean, maybe you can, but like, you're probably not going to be able to name that, right? These students went for a whole week. And that in and of itself is a valuable experience. I even had us, now, of course, they were quick to tell me they do miss their Xbox and other things. However, one student came up and I was like, well, what's it like being without it? You know, they, she said, or I can't, I think she said, well, you know, it's actually kind of nice because I don't have to worry about what is being said. And so what a great experience for our kids to have this and connect. And I just think our Tulare County of Education for supporting this. And thank you to all our district team, our principals, our staff that also go and spend time away from their families to make this event happen. And so I just wanted to make sure I spotlighted that tonight. I do look forward to going back. I want to spend a night or two because there are quite a few activities I heard about astrology and some other things that I need to go experience. So I will be back. Yesterday, we had a great event at Mountain View Elementary School as they recognized and honored September 11th. Of course, most of us of my age and around that remember exactly where we were, what we were doing when this tragic event happened in our nation. And since that time, of course, this has now become Patriot Day, a day of remembrance. Let us never forget the sacrifices of so many people on this day. And so it was just very, it was emotional, but also very uplifting to see our youngest students learn about this day, but also see them come together to celebrate the day, to recognize. We had representatives from our armed forces, from the police department, the fire department, paramedics that were there, our students, we had a couple of student speakers as well. And so the Mount Whitney Band, Color Guard were there. It was just a great way to start the day for the students. This is a tradition at Mountain View Elementary and one that, that is a great tradition. And so I was honored along with several other board members and district staff to be able to attend that day. And there's a little video we have on social media of that. I encourage you to watch it because the words are just really powerful that you hear spoken there. So wanted to spotlight that event as well. Spotlight on sportsmanship, you know, so often we get caught up in competitiveness and had an opportunity here at this volleyball game where one of our players was hurt. And the gym immediately went silent and just the student, the team rallied around that student. And so we just wanted to talk about, this was at Golden West, that volleyball players for being such good, incredible teammates, but the entire Golden West community, including coaches and support staff, all pitching in to support a kid and a family when we had an injury. And really, you know, although we don't want those to happen, sometimes that happens, right? But when it does, like, we come together in a spirit of sportsmanship. And while we want to win, of course, right? It is still about the skills and things that we learn from participation in these events and connectivity. So shout out for great sportsmanship at Golden West exhibited during that volleyball game. Spotlight on our ELOP program athletics. Had a chance to attend on Friday, the first flag football game for our sixth, fourth through sixth graders, I think it is. In our after-school ELOT program, it was Highland versus Houston on the new turf. I can't remember who won, it really doesn't matter. It was about all of them getting out there to have fun. All of the, so our ELOT program is for our elementary students after school. And this is going to rotate. So each school site is going to get to experience flag football, soccer, and some other sports all throughout the year. In addition to a school play, VAPA, and some other things. Our ELOT team has built an absolutely incredible program. And it is noteworthy, I am proud of it. You can see this program literally changing lives for kids right in front of your eyes. Right in front of your eyes. And, you know, I'm thankful for this funding stream. And we also had a great event this weekend, another expansion of this is including partnerships. And so partnering with our Aquatic Center held a camp with Olympians, an Olympian. Gold, actually, I don't know if he won the gold medal, I probably shouldn't say that, but Olympian. And his coach, right, his dad, were there and put on a clinic for middle school kids, right? That are interested in being on the water polo team maybe in high school. And so many of our high school kids were also helping out. How often do you get to be coached by someone who has been at the Olympic level for many, many years? So it was just amazing to watch him coach and see our middle school kids held a clinic for boys and girls to learn more about the sport that they're interested in. So we have a short little video clip, I believe, about this that we want to show. But again, another example of our ELOT, our partnership extending not only to elementary but middle. And I think the growth and what this is doing for our kids in this community is just absolutely amazing. At LD Amate this morning and afternoon, really just expanding opportunities for our kids. And what's really unique about today through this partnership is they are being coached by actual Olympians, Olympian coaches. So what an amazing opportunity for our students who play water polo or maybe are interested in playing water polo when they get to high school. At LD Amate this morning and afternoon, really just expanding. I was like, wait a minute, all right, thank you. So just wanted, I mean, you can see the excitement on the kids' faces and what a great opportunity. And very proud of our partnerships as we continue to expand those for our extended learning opportunity program. Spotlight on instruction, of course, at the end of the day, that's what we're about. And so you see some examples here of our teachers working in their professional learning community teams. You see an example of our phonics program, of course, thanks to this investment of the board. And every single cabinet member, including the superintendent, week after next, will be teaching a phonics lesson. We'll definitely spotlight that because I know you'll want to see examples of that. So we'll bring that back. And teachers attending, more information about learning into systems which support math A through G. And so you see some of our teachers there. And so thank you to all of our teachers, counselors, and leaders who are being relentlessly intentional about improving conditions so that every student succeeds. Our focus on safety continues. This board invested in Alice Active Shooter Training. It's training that we need to be prepared, but hope we never have to utilize. And so as part of that continuing growth of that, last, this week, last week, we had train the trainers. And so now we will have the capacity within our district as new employees come onboard and others that we're able to immediately train them. And so nearly 50 staff members were trained, including assistant principals and school safety personnel, along with volunteers, officers from Visalia Police Department and two Tulare County Sheriff deputies as well, as well. So continuing to invest in and, and expand our preparedness. This month, we have several campaigns that our schools will be engaging in. First, of course, is National Hispanic Month. And so we're excited about that education campaign. Also, Celebrate School Attendance Awareness Month. Actually, proud to report, despite what the media may say, our local attendance and staff attendance is even greater than it was this time last year. And so our families know and our teachers know how important it is to be present every day. And so thank you for our students, our staff that get up every morning and come to work, come ready to teach, come ready to learn, come ready to support. You really do make a difference. And also September is Suicide Prevention Month. And so those are all things that, information's being shared with our students at our school. And we look forward to bringing some of that back to our board and our spotlight next month of the things that we've done in recognition of those months. And as our favorite event is back, or one of my favorite events, I have to say, is our High Five Fridays. That's the last Friday of the month, our district staff goes to a school just to give high fives, right? To our kids, some like to run through the line a couple of times, we accept that, that's okay. Staff members run through it too, more than acceptable. So we really, just really to build excitement and for us to be back on our campuses as well. And so we'll end with, I believe, a little just clip of that. I will tell you that even high schoolers will smile, you just have to work at it. So thank you, Madam President, that concludes my report.
Any board comment or questions? All right, let's move on. 4.2, public hearing, a resolution of sufficiency of instructional materials. I will now open a public meeting. Mr. Thompson, Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership.
Sorry, mine's not quite as exciting. But good evening, Board President, good morning, Board members and Superintendent Shrum. To be eligible to receive instructional material funds, the governing board is required to hold an annual public hearing and adopt a resolution stating whether each student in the district has a sufficient textbooks or instructional materials in specified subjects. These materials are aligned to the academic content standards and are consistent with the curriculum frameworks adopted by the State Board of Education. The specified subjects include mathematics, science, history, social science, English language arts, including English language development component of an adopted program. On behalf of the Teaching and Learning Team and the Textbook Staff, I certify to you that VUSD has met all requirements for sufficiency of instructional materials and that by adopting the resolution enclosure 4.2 in your board pocket tonight, you meet the needs of the statutory requirement. Our staff recommendation is that you approve the enclosed resolution.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Any board comment?
This is exciting. I don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you.
All right, I'll close the public meeting. May I have a motion to approve the resolution on the sufficiency of instructional materials?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it.
So on a motion by Board Member Vegas, second by Board Member Belt, all in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
4.3 Focus on School Leadership. Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership, Mr. Thompson.
Wait for just a moment for it to get up. But again, good to see you again. Good evening again, President Gomoyan, Superintendent Trump, and Board Members. Tonight is actually this one I am very excited about. I get the opportunity to share with you our focus on school site leadership, which I'm really excited because we have all of our school site leadership leaders in the room tonight. And so this is talking about their development and how they're leading and impacting school sites. Tonight's presentation is rooted in our core beliefs and commitments, all of them, because we recognize that we provide high quality learning experiences and safe, supportive, and innovative environments where students, parents, and staff feel safe and connected. And we recognize that school leaders are a vital role in making that happen each and every day in our schools. Our agenda for this presentation tonight is the role of the district, research on school leadership, leading in Visalia, and elevating leadership. So the role of the district, I'm going to start with the role of the school board, which we've talked several times about this, is to provide conditions for the district office to provide leadership and support to school leaders. School leaders then create the conditions for success for teachers, which in turn creates conditions for student success. This flow of creating conditions is important to understand and clearly shows the need for us to invest in school site leaders, development, and coaching as they lead teachers and our students each and every day. Question I might ask you and think for just a moment, what makes an effective principal? Now, tonight, that is a rhetorical question, but some things might come to your mind. They're an instructional leader. They're a manager of resources. They're a building leader. They're visible. They're a good communicator. They build relationships. They are proactive. They are kind. They are visionary. They are likable, right? They are smart. They are organized. What I'm trying to get at is this. All of us, each of us have our own vision of what makes an effective principal. Tonight, you will see that we have built a VUSD leadership framework around research-based practices of effective leadership actions. Why we want to clearly define this is so that we can define and train our site leaders on what leadership looks like in VUSD. Last year, thank you to the board for investing in our principal supervisors, which are entitled administrators of school leaders, formerly known as areas to many of us. Our leaders, our administrators of school leadership team got ongoing training on implementing structures to conduct effective site visits through the principal supervision academy. They also are receiving training on developing and supporting 90-day work plans through the Partner for Leaders in Education, which focuses on a few big rocks with clear work plans to improve student achievement outcomes. As well as they have a thought partnership with a consultant slash coach that provides training and support on developing internal systems and to create consistency and efficiency amongst the team. Our administrators are poised and trained and will continue to receive more training to effectively lead and coach our site principals in high leverage, research-based leadership strategies, systems, and processes that lead to transformational change in our schools. For the past 20 years, the Wallace Foundation has focused its research on school reform. So this is talking about looking at some research on the impact of school leaders. They discovered this, despite years of educational reform efforts, many urban school, public schools are falling short, unable to raise student achievement. A missing ingredient is improving public K-12 education is sound school leadership. School leaders is second only to teachers in school influences on student success. Let me say that again. We already know how impactful that teacher is in that classroom every single day. But we also know they need to have the conditions set in place and a leader that is supporting and guiding them and working with them each and every day. And that the research shows they are the second biggest impact. And that's why we have to invest. The Wallace Foundation identified four key practices that effective school leaders do more often than lower performing school leaders. They do high leverage instructional activities, building a productive culture and climate, facilitating collaboration and learning communities, strategic management of personnel and resources. These four key practices are focused on proactive, strategic planning that equips and empowers staff to confidently execute their job in a culture of collaboration. So why is that important? It's important because of this. A recent research study outlined, and the chief executive found that when it comes to execution, lower performing teams spend an astonishing 83% more time firefighting, meaning dealing with issues at a tactical level rather than at a strategic level. Our site leaders and school staff will encounter day-to-day challenges. But in order for them to be high performing, we must focus our attention on proactive strategic planning in order to provide all of our students an outstanding educational experience. Finally, just a little bit more research on this. So the Wallace Foundation researched compared underperforming elementary principals, meaning below the 25th percentile. So if you have 100 folks, they're the 25 or the bottom 25 compared to above average elementary principals, which was 75th percentile or above, and found that all students in a school with an above average elementary principal increased their math learning each year by 2.9 months and their reading levels by 2.7 months. Let me say that. That is all students in that school. Let me put it another way. An above average K-6 principal would increase all students in that school's math and reading by two years over a student's elementary career. That's a huge increase for all students. It is evident site leadership matters. Here in Visalia Unified, we are committed to developing site leaders so that they can reach their full potential and become elite leaders, serving their students and their community. Now I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Matt Shin, Administrator of School Leadership, to share with you what this will look like in Visalia Unified.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Thompson. Good evening. I'm Matt Shin, Administrator of School Leadership, and I'm here to provide you with some information about school leadership in Visalia Unified. So over the past year, leading in Visalia Unified has gone through a transition within our Learning and Leadership Division. There is now a greater focus on developing site leadership, as you just heard. With that focus in mind, we have developed this draft of a leadership framework for leading in Visalia. Here's the draft. Oh, went too fast there. Okay, so the draft has three main areas of focus, as you can see. You have teaching and learning, climate and culture, and talent and resource management. All three focus areas help contribute to equitable outcomes for students in Visalia Unified. The draft also shows what effective leaders do within each of these focus areas. And I'm not going to read those bullet points because this is a draft, so those could change before they come to you for approval. So as Assistant Superintendent Thompson presented earlier, research has shown us that the site principle greatly affects student learning at a school site. With this research-based approach in mind, the Learning and Leadership Division has determined that the four administrators of school leadership, also known as the ASLs, are primarily primarily responsible for coaching site administrators on being effective in the focus areas of teaching and learning, climate and culture, and talent and resource management. I got too strong of a thumb, I guess. Sorry about that. So past practice for the group formerly known as the area administrators was visiting school sites as time permitted in their schedules. However, with what research has shown us, it's about building site leadership capacity through a coaching model with time spending classrooms together with the principals. So now we have designed our site-based visits on what we know from research-based action. We have increased the frequency of our school site visits. We have also increased the duration of the time during our site visits. And we are differentiating school site visits according to the needs of support for each school site. As the ASLs visits various school sites, we are intentional in addressing the three focus areas of the leadership framework. Our visits are focused on our VUSD initiatives, which include tier-one instruction, those tier-one routines and procedures as well, literacy at the K-2 model, math one at the secondary levels, as well as a problem of practice that the principal will identify during our visit or before our visit. This intentionality has allowed each of our principals to experience consistency within the site visits. It has allowed us the opportunities for research, for us to research and for calibration and application as well. So a typical school site visit will consist of a brief meeting between the site principal and the ASL prior to visiting classrooms with intentionality. While walking the school site and visiting classrooms, the ASLs and site principal or other site leaders will start focusing on tier-one instructional practices and strategies, as well as the types of tier-one systems and procedures being used during instruction. ASLs and site leaders may collect data during their classroom visits and use this data to help identify tier-one trends, patterns of instruction, and any other problems of practice that they may see. There may also be a point, there may also be a point in the site visit where the ASLs connect our site leaders with our district resources, such as our specific content specialists for teaching and learning or content specialists in the education support department that can assist them with specific needs at their school sites. The site visit will then conclude with the ASL and the site principal discussing their observations and/or data collected, and then next steps or follow-up actions. I will now turn the presentation over to my colleague and fellow ASL Natalie Garza.
I'm not going to say ASL 10 times. It's hard to get used to. So we know that our instructional leaders need a clear focus and deep understanding of that leadership framework. So we've intentionally planned professional development during our general leadership session that focuses on teaching and learning, climate and culture, and talent and resource management. Our goal is to not only provide professional learning opportunities, but also follow up with implementation and alignment for district foundations during our site visits. Part of developing a deeper understanding of our GLS learning is having our principals working in professional learning communities. This has allowed not only principals to work together, but our teachers to collaborate with grade-level partners across that PLC. Leadership development is closely linked to student success. This past year, we invested in developing a partnership with the University of Virginia and their Partnership for Leaders in Education to develop a learning lab model where several executive cabinet members, ASLs, and six principals endeavored to developing a different way for the district to orient their support to schools. This group of administrators are engaged in innovative practices to advance student learning at their sites and to think differently about how we serve our students. Michael Lambert is one of the principals who's part of this group, and I would like for him to share his experience so far.
Good evening. I don't think I have to click any buttons, so. We spent, we spent a month or a week in Charlottesville, Virginia, and it was an amazing time at the Darden School of Business on the UVA campus. We went to school in the morning and learned from some amazing instructors. And then in the afternoon, we met with and learned from other experts in the field, principals, area superintendents, ASLs that have utilized this system to make their school a transformative process. It's a different way of looking at education. It real, we developed a 90-day plan was one of the outcomes of the of the week, but it was driven by our why. Why we get up in the morning, why we do the things that we do. And we looked at site data and our why to develop a plan so that we can progress, monitor the steps. We talked about finding barriers or big rocks along the way and make our school a transformative school. Starting the year, the 90-day plan helped me develop all my staff development and preparation for students. And I continue to use that as an open tab actually on my computer with my 90-day plan, just to make sure that I'm following it appropriately. And it gave me an outcome and a setting for the for the school year to come. I'm looking forward, it's a two-year program. I'm looking forward as we travel through and seeing how my 90-day plan outcomes are, how they come out. And then also looking to to see how I can dig deeper to make Golden West a transformative school. But as a member of the Leading Six, it was an amazing experience. And I think all of us took away a different aspect of what we see in education. It was just a different way of looking at education. It was amazing. And we were there.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And just so you know, also those 90-day plans, part of the plan is actually getting back to your site and collaborating with your team and orienting them on what the data look like. So it's really rooted in that why, but then coming back to your school site and investing in your team so that you guys are moving together forward as one team. At this time, that concludes our, that concludes our presentation, and I will stand by for any questions.
Is there any board comment or questions, Mr. Belt?
President Gomoyan, Mr. Thompson, I've lived in Visalia 40 years. And not only my four sons that went through Visalia Unified Schools, but then also being married to a teacher wife of mine, I've seen lots of principals. And what I am hearing and watching over the last several months, not just tonight, but several months as you guys have formulated this and now getting it into a practice. I've never seen this kind of training investment in principals. It's great to hear collaborating rather than dictating because it seemed in the past, you kind of fell into being a principal because you had certain strengths or charisma, but not the full breadth of what you're trying to do, as Michael Lambert just said, transforming leadership, which will transform our school. So I applaud what you guys are doing because this is going to make a difference. I recently heard a principal respond to my wife who said, you know, my scores were good last year in my third grade class. And the principal looked at her and said, that's would be on me. And I'd never heard a principal say that before. It wasn't her principal, but it was a principal who recognized the strength of the leadership, investing in the teachers and in what we're, the culture makes all the difference in the world. And that's what you're heading towards. And so I applaud all of you. It's always amazing to see this many principals in the room. But it's because you are taking the time to have our students have the very best of everyone. So thanks for doing that.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to say thank you to the ASLs. And if I could brag a little bit, Mike was my biology student. And I just want to thank the principals. You have been charged with an incredible task. And it's like this big adventure. And I just want to thank you for undertaking it. And I'm very excited what's going to happen with our kids. It's going to be amazing. Thank you.
Last thing, I'm going to add on to that, too. We're not, we're developing because everyone needs a coach. And that's our commitment here. You know, we have amazing leadership here in this district. This is not because we don't. It's because we do, and we want them to become the elite leaders in this valley and in the state. So I just want to be, I commend the work that they do each and every day. So thank you.
Okay. 4.4 Preliminary State Data Report. I think we're going to hear from Mr. Thompson again.
I think they're trying to get me taken care of for like the next four months. They're putting me all in one, so. Sorry, please bear with me. Good evening, Board President Gomoyan, Superintendent Trump, Board Members. Tonight, I get the opportunity to share with you our preliminary, again, I'll say that preliminary, these are not finalized yet, state data report for the 2223 school year. Tonight's presentation is rooted in the first core belief that all students can achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. On our first slide, the University of California A through G is a series of 15 high school classes that are designed to prepare students for college. Classes are in six subject areas, each represented by the letter from A through G. Students that wish to attend the University of California are Students that wish to attend the University of California or California State University will need a C or better in order to be eligible to apply as a freshman in each of these categories. Students that are unsure about their college plans are encouraged still to be A through G completers because that keeps all their options open for them. So if you look at the document there, you see school sites, which is all of our high school sites. You see the enrollment student, which is how many seniors we have at each of those sites. Then you're looking at A through G percentage, that's for this twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The percentage of students that were completers. You have next to that, the twenty-one, twenty-two data of how many students were completers, and then you have the growth or change between those two. Overall, our A through G data grew from thirty percent, if you see down at the bottom, thirty percent last, uh, two years ago to forty-seven percent, which is a seventeen percent increase. VTAC showed an eight percent growth while most others high schools decreased a few percents compared to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I would also like to highlight LD Amonte High School as they grew in their A through G rate by twenty-five percent. I'll say that again, they grew by twenty-five percent this last year, which is huge. This was done by being relentlessly intentional with looking at each senior schedules and reviewing what class or classes they needed to become an A through G completer. Then they met with each student, enrolled them in these classes, and followed up with them throughout the year. Congratulations to the LD team for a job well done. Going forward, our college and career team will work with our high school sites to replicate some of the effective practices that LD implemented this last year. Next, advanced placement is also referred to as AP classes. AP classes give students the chance to tackle great, uh, college level work while they're still in high school. And they're also able to take AP exams, which allows students to earn college credit and placement. As you look at the chart, you will see that the left-hand column is what AP classes we offer in our high schools. Next column is the number of students enrolled. The next column is the total number of students that decided to take the AP test. So you're not required to take the AP test just because you took the class. There's a ton of value just to take the class itself as you're exposed to college level curriculum and also to an increased rigor. Again, but it's an option to take the, the test itself. Next to that, you have how many students decided to take the test, which is the percentage of how many decided to take that test. And then the last one is passed, how many students passed that test. In VUSD, we want every student that wants to take the AP test to have the opportunity. So many people might not know this, but we actually cover the cost of the student's first AP test. And we also offer waivers to students who qualify if they decide to take additional AP tests and that we can work with them. Five years ago was when we started offering in-person dual enrollment courses, which are classes offered in partnership with the colleges. And recently, a few online classes through National Equity Lab. At that time, there was a concern that enrollment in AP classes would be negatively impacted due to these dual enrollment courses. I'm happy to report that the AP enrollment has actually slightly increased recently. While dual enrollment has also been added. So what that actually means is we have more students that are taking advanced level courses. And we know that taking advanced level courses prepares students for the rigor of college and also provides them increased critical thinking skills and opportunities.
Mr. Thompson, before you go.
Yes.
Go on, I normally don't interrupt.
You're okay.
Could you go back one slide?
I totally can.
I just wanted to take a moment because I know there's going to be so much other stuff that it'll get lost.
Yes.
I wanted to take a moment because we, we said it, but I don't think we applauded like.
I agree with you.
Like LD's counseling team. Uh, because I, it's my understanding that it was really like their counseling team that kind of pulled this off. And so I just wanted us to give them a round.
Yeah, so let's give them a round to their learning directors. They did a great job. Yes. And Mrs. Nelson, thank you for doing that work. She was instrumental in directing that and working with the team to make that happen. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, this chart, sorry, I got a lot of charts tonight, right? So it's data. This chart is a preliminary English Language Arts or ELA cohort CAS data. CAS stands for the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. You might ask, what is a cohort? A cohort is when you compare the same group of students over a period of time. For example, if you look at the first column, you will find third to fourth grade. Then you'll see above that, the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. And then their change. So this status shows the cohort data for the students that were third graders in two thousand twenty-two. They were the same ones that are now fourth graders in two thousand twenty-three. Cohort data is used so that you can see if the same student group has grown year over year, ultimately providing the answer if a student group grew, remained the same, or decreased. This data is measuring if a student met or exceeded proficiency, or if they were nearly met or not meeting proficiency. While you're aware that eleventh graders are assessed, you probably noticed that eleventh graders aren't on this document. And the reason for that is ninth and tenth graders do not take this assessment, so we don't really have a good data point. Um, as we know, the testing got kind of weird during COVID, so we don't have that. So that's why we did not provide that tonight. Now I want to draw your attention to the far right column, which is the blue area right over there, which is standards meets or exceeded. This shows the percentage of students that matter exceeded proficiency. As you can see, third through seventh grade, we need, we either stayed, remained the same, or showed a small increase. While this is a modest, um, sorry. Why, so if we look over here, you see that actually there's modest gains in all of them. What I mean by that is if you look at third and fourth, we didn't have a change from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. Fourth through six, or fourth to fifth grade, we had a two percent, two percent in fifth and sixth, and then three percent in six and seven. So we did have a minor gains. While this is a modest gain, I want to point out though, in two thousand twenty-two, the test was modified by the state and students only took eighty percent of the test. In the two thousand twenty-three, they took the full comprehensive test. So the, going forward, this really is two thousand twenty-three data will be an excellent baseline for future CAS testing results. We did show on here that in seventh and eighth grade cohort, we had a decrease of eleven percent. This is an area of concern for us, and we will, we have work to do. This year, we committed to adding an academic instructional coach to each middle school so they're able to support teachers. Also, we will take a deeper look into the pacing guides and structures of our double period ELA block, along with our refocus on professional learning communities where teachers are able to review students' results as a team on common assessments that will inform their teaching as they move forward. This chart is a preliminary math cohort CAS data. I want to draw your attention again to that far right column that shows the percentage of each cohort of students that met or exceeded proficiency. Across all but fifth and sixth grade cohort, we saw a small decrease in student proficiency. Keep in mind, again, the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three tests were different as the twenty-three test was twenty percent longer. But we know we have work to do here as well. With our math instructional balance model, we are aligning our pacing guide, resources, and teaching methods to provide consistent, high-quality instruction to all classrooms. With this alignment, along with the additional instructional coaches and the refocus on quality professional learning communities on each campus, we are confident that we are going to see academic growth. This chart is still CAS data. But it's another way to look at it for both ELA and math. Distance from standard is determined by first identify the proficiency level for each grade level. So let me orient you on this one. So obviously on the left-hand column, you have the grade and also some student population groups, student groups. If you're not familiar, SPED is special education, homeless, foster, English only. ELL learners, which is English language learners, and then socioeconomic disadvantaged students. So you'll see the grade, the skip two columns, you have ELA and change, but you go to the Met score. So that Met score is the proficiency score. Meaning if a student hits that number, then that means they're considered proficient. Okay, so, and so that Met score in the middle there that has the blue on the bottom of it are the Met scores for each grade level in ELA. If you go to the far right-hand side, it'll be for the math. Okay, so that's the Met score. Now, in ELA, you'll see that if you go back to that second column, let's go third grade, second column, so ELA, and it shows a negative thirty-four. So how you just orient on that is this, the Met score is two thousand four hundred and thirty-two. For our third graders average, we were behind by thirty-four points off from that two thousand four hundred and thirty-two. That's the average for all of our third graders in ELA. Now, the change is actually we grew six points compared to our two twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two data. So that's how you read that. In math, I'll go just across for third grade there, right? So the Met score is two thousand four hundred and thirty-six. Our students averaged a negative, uh, behind by thirty. So a change from two thousand twenty-two, we actually increased by five. So in two thousand twenty-two, we'd have been a minus thirty-five. Okay. I'm going to give you now some context of what those numbers actually mean. So you can kind of see that across the board there. In, in, in ELA, our average, we are behind. So if you go to the bottom is a twenty-eight points behind in the, from the proficiency line. To provide context, in two thousand twenty-two, I don't have the two thousand twenty-three because preliminary still, but in two thousand twenty-two, Tulare County average uh, was a hundred and sixteen point eight points behind the proficiency line. And the state average was twelve point six behind the proficiency line. Overall, in ELA, we saw pockets of small increases and decreases, but overall, our data was flat. Keep in mind, the twenty-two data is eighty percent of the test compared to the twenty-three data. The two areas that do stand out that we need to place focus on is middle school and our foster youth. I've already talked about middle school and what we're working on there. Our foster youth, um, many of you know, but maybe not everyone, is our family and community engagement team works extremely hard to stay in consistent contact with our foster youth in order to provide them support, stability, um, for them and their families. We will continue to find a way to provide our foster youth both social and academic supports so that way they can continue to thrive and that we can see them improving academically as well. In our math, our average was seventy-one points behind the proficiency line. In two thousand twenty-two, Tulare County was a hundred and seventy-nine points behind, that was the average for Tulare County. And our state average that was, uh, points behind proficiency line was fifty-one. Overall, in math, we see a small increase in all grade levels and students or groups while we see modest growth, but we are, I'm sorry, we saw small increases across the board. If you look at that, um, I think eighth grade, maybe we had a minus one there. But again, very modest when you're looking at a scale of twenty-four hundred points, right? So a couple of points here or there. While we're seeing modest, modest growth, again, we're not, we're not content with that, right? So we are committed to continuous improvement and focusing and, and, and improving our skills. Even, I'm almost there. So you guys, stay with me. We're here, we're almost there. I know it's a lot of data, but it's good data, and it's important that we're looking at our data. And it makes a difference, uh, because we can't make good changes if we're not clear on what our data is and what it's telling us so that way we can make strategic transformational change. English learners or ELS are students that start school with a primary home language other than English. Each year, all EL students are required to take the English Language Proficiency for California Assessment, or what we call the LPAC, because we love acronyms in our business, to show their proficiency in the English language. So the chart shows up here is the grade levels. So we have ELS in all grade levels. Um, how many students were tested this last year? And then the number next to that, the third column, is how many students reclassified. Next to that is the percentage of students that reclassified comparing it to the enrollment numbers. I want to draw your attention to the bottom row. It is the overall number for the entire district. This year, we reclassified, reclassified, um, four hundred and sixty-five students, which equals ten percent of our ELL population. Compared to last year, this is double the amount of students that we did. Okay, so double, so four hundred and sixty-five. Reclass means that a student now shows proficiency in English. They are, they are cleared of that EL status, they are called, that's why they're called reclassified, they're reclassified out of that program. So you might ask the question, well, why is this important? EL students that are able to master the English language are much more successful in academics. Many of them become bilingual in both their, their primary language and in English, which also eventually can get them the syllable literacy. We also recognize in our community and all communities around the world, how valuable and important it is for students to be bilingual in our, in our current workforce. Also, reclassified students aren't required to take English language classes i- in their secondary schooling. This allows them to have an additional class period so they could take a visual and performing arts class. They could take a CTE class, they could take a dual enrollment class, or an AP class, or another elective of their choosing. So essentially, what it's doing, it's opening doors and opportunities for, for our EL students. I want to just give a shout out to all of our, uh, all of our EL team on sites at the district office for, office for all their hard work in getting the reclass. We've seen a doubling of students over the last two years, so very proud of them. And Ms. Case Priscillino, let's give them a clap for that. Thank you. I provide you with a lot of high-level preliminary data. But no, we as a team will be looking at this data in more detail to monitor and adjust our work plans to ensure that we optimize student academic performances in our district. As we know, looking at that data matters. Finally, I just wanted to share with you. Tonight, a series of four videos will go out over this next month, so one a week. To our VUSD community to start sharing our data out, um, in that way. So you'll see those coming out, uh, first one starting tonight. At this time, I'll remain for any questions.
You're a good teacher, Mr. Thompson.
I don't know about that. You guys have had a lot of me tonight, so.
Thank you. Is there any board comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I want to start with, uh, also echoing the shout out to all of our English Language Learner teams on our sites. I think a lot of credit to that, and, and I've been invited to actually talk to some of our English Language Learners. And the way that they have talked to students, the way that they've introduced this, um, I, I love it because we're shifting away from this sort of deficit mindset of, you know, you're an English Language learner to saying, you know, I, I saw students, um, being presented, for example, a TED Talk video of two young individuals uh, who led this bilingual presentation and how much of an asset that is to themselves, to our community, to the world at large. And so I just want to, you know, show a lot of love to our team to reframe this and who have, you know, emphasized why it's so important for our students to be uh, bilingual and learn multiple languages. So thank you to all of our teams. Um, I had a couple of questions, um, around a few different slides that were presented. I'll start with the AP. What are some of the reasons, and we saw varied numbers across, you know, students who chose to take the exam versus students who did not? What are some of the primary reasons that students choose not to take the exam? Given that, as you discussed, the, the cost for the exam itself isn't a barrier. So what do you, what are some of the reasons that students choose not to?
There's several, I mean, there, obviously that's personal to each student, right? So first of all, we also, I first wanted to share just the value of the class in and of itself, right? So taking the class exposes students to that college level. When a student goes through the class, they have to make that determination if they feel like this is a, this is a test that I want to take to get college credit. Some students, they prefer not to take the test because they have anxiety of the test, or they're maybe not quite sure if they're ready for that test. The good information that I do have is we actually have a very high number of students that do take these tests. And, um, actually did some research on the pass rate because that, if I was you, I'd ask the question about pass rate. And I've been very pleased at looking at the state pass rate of students that did type, did decide to take the test. We are consistent or above the state in almost every single test. There's a couple of tests that we're a little bit behind, but those are areas that we'll look at. But just very excited at the pass rate. Some of our pass rates are almost, uh, twenty percent more than the states. Um, but again, it depends on the student, it depends on why they took the class in the first place. And if that's what they're doing to move ahead in, um, that particular subject, I'll give you one of those things personally, no, talking to a student. They're really focused, maybe an English major, but they're taking this class as a math, as a math class. They're wanting to take that math class again as a college level because they didn't feel confident they wanted that class again. So that, that's some situations that happen that way as well.
And understandably, these students also typically earn that GPA point.
Yes.
Is there any sort of penalty? For example, let's say they, they take the AP exam, they don't do it as well as they, they'd liked, they're in a one or a two. They're not required, are they required to report those scores when they apply to other colleges or universities, or is that also their autonomous decision?
It's actually, I'm working through the process right now, I have a senior myself. Um, it's actually an optional to give SAT scores, I'm sorry, SAT, but also AP scores. It's optional, they can submit them. Many, many colleges are actually taking twos these days. So I would encourage students, even if you're not sure, go out and take the test anyways, because they are actually have more flexibility on what they're doing now with AP tests. The other part too is, you know, we do have students that are also taking the dual enrollment courses as well. And so that's also taking a different grouping that way as well, and they're looking guaranteed college credit that way. So there's a combination here of. So there's a combination here of, the student has to pick which one best fits for them, and then make a determination if that test is best, best fit for them as well.
Right. Just looking and then thinking through ways we might be able to better incentivize them, but understandably, students may have personal reasons. Um, my other question was around, uh, our A through G completion rates. And I'm, uh, looking at the data, very excited and, and already happy to hear that we're looking at how can we model what we did at El Diamante at all of our sites. Um, and so I'm also wondering, do we have disaggregated data for each of those sites to understand, basically, did those students not meet A through G because they earned a D or an F in the class as opposed to a passing grade of a C? Versus how many just didn't take the course at all to be fully A through G? Do we have that?
Yeah. So I will tell you, our high school principals and their teams, along with the college and career team, seeing what our results are and seeing, uh, what results El Diamante got and the things that we're working on. They're already actively working on really scanning through transcripts and working that. We're also working with another outside company to work with us and support in those areas. So I'm very excited about that. The excitement and the commitment of our site principals at the high school level to make sure our students are A through G completers, um, has actually blown me away. Um, as we've seen this data, they're like, we want better, we want more. We're going to figure this out. We gotta get it. We gotta, we gotta figure this out and get them there. So.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, and kudos. I think, you know, we, we've set the bar high. I, I think we all collectively want to continue to raise that bar. And I, and I hope that we as a board also continue to have those discussions around A through G and what that looks like for every student, um, here in our district. So, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Okay, Mrs.
I'm sorry, one more, just to kind of follow up on Dr. Vegas' comment there. So are we disaggregating the data to see why they're not A to G?
So that was a big part of what how El, El Diamante moved forward. So again, we're going to use practices that El Diamante created and did, um, that we're working on. So yes, that was definitely a part of what they were doing. They looked specifically at every student's transcripts to see why. Many times, it's one class. Like, that's their senior year, and they have flexibility in their schedule their senior year, so it's getting that, them in that class. But you know, it's more than just getting a kid into a class, right? It's actually checking in on them, giving them the why that class is important and what that, what doors open because of that. So that's the work that we have to do. Like I said, it's not just a quick fix and move on. It's actually a continual relationship conversation with that student. So they make sure they understand and they cross that finish line. Uh, to begin, they might not even, college might not be their focus, but we want to keep that door open in case that becomes an option later on. They still have that option available to them, uh, towards the end of the school year. So yes, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Four point five, Visel Unified School District Mission and Vision, Mr. Shrum.
All right. Well, good evening, Board President Gamoyen, board members. Uh, excited to bring back our mission and vision. I want to compliment, this board has worked, uh, through multiple work sessions to make sure we get language that clearly, uh, demonstrates what we believe, uh, for our mission and vision, committed to, uh, and all of those things. And I want to ground everyone again in our foundation slide. These are our foundational policies that this board has passed unanimously, that point the direction of this district, right, for the future. Our core beliefs and commitments, what we believe in and we're committed to doing. Our commitment to student learning, also known as our theory of action. And our strategic plan, which will list the initiatives to make those things happen. Initiatives meaning like the actual thing. So for example, we talk about, uh, how do we increase parental involvement, right? Well, an initiative that may be in our strategic plan may be, every school has an active PTO or PTA, right? That's an example of how that will work. That strategic plan will make those beliefs and commitments become reality through those initiatives. And so when we think about our mission and vision, you will notice the revised version that comes before you tonight is much simplified compared to some of the earlier versions, uh, that we had shared, and that's by design. And here's why it's by design. Because how we do this, how every student learns every day, and how we're going to make sure every student is empowered to achieve future success is here and will be in our strategic plan. So for example, when we say every student learning every day, we used to have words in there that said connected, uh, engaged and those sorts of things. But that is how they learn. So how we want students to learn is we want them to be connected. We want parents to be involved. We want them to be engaged, right? Which you don't see here because how we learn, oops, went the wrong way, is here. And so I wanted to draw those connections, right? Because the strategic plan and the beliefs and the commitments are how we're going to make those things happen. So when we say we want every kid to learn every day, we want all these things to happen to make that learning happen. And so, board, tonight I present to you our revised mission and vision, and I again appreciate the thoughtfulness of this board. Uh, this board, every member took this to heart, provided numerous layers of feedback, uh, to get us to this point. And so our recommendation for our mission is every student learning every day. At the end of the day, that's what we're about as a school system. All the other things are important, but you're either learning or you're not. And then as a product, right, the vision, the future state, is a student leaving Visel Unified has to be empowered to achieve future success. Whatever that success is for them, we want to make sure they're empowered with everything they need. And again, all those things that they need aren't in the mission and vision. They're here, right? And they're in our strategic plan. So that concludes my report. I'll turn it back over to the president, and here is our recommendation for approval tonight for the USD mission and vision.
Comments, questions, board? Mr. Belt?
Thank you, President Gamoyen, and so much, Mr. Shrum. I am on record in our last public meeting, though we discussed this, of trying to extend some ideas and some words. And I think I even had a moment of inspiration that night that I hadn't thought about, about it being a conscience, that, that's how we utilize a mission statement. Uh, but I, I do want to say, I appreciate how this statement is clear and concise. Um, and it doesn't have the extra things that any one of us, many of us wanted to add. And so with this in mind, and with what we've already made very, very clear, our core beliefs and commitments include families and parents. Um, I can gladly say this is a good mission statement.
Any other questions or comments? Could I have a motion to accept, uh, to approve our USD mission and vision of statements?
Motion to approve?
All second. On a motion by Board Member Naylor, second by Board Member Gabby, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes, and motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Great work.
And I want to say I'm glad. I'm happy that it's simple, so then we're out in the community and someone says, what is our mission and what, what is our vision? It's very simple, you know, every student learning. So thank you very much for.
And let me just tag, let me just tag into that for just a bit. Committee work can create one of two things. It can create junk that the committee just kind of struggled through, and that was the best they could get, or it can create great, clear things. This work here, I think, represents the latter and not the former. So thanks to the board for doing that and wanting to get to clarity.
Thank you, board. Let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Shrum. Uh, five, general public comment. General public comment on any school-related topic will be heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda will be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and the understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant board poly, sorry, policy, the board will limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual, individual topics to twenty minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Our first public comment is Sean Saltman.
I believe he left.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Crystal Reynolds.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Reynolds, and I am the mother of three with one child in the district. I hope and pray that my statements tonight resonate with each one of you. Most particularly, I hope they resonate with you, Mr. Otto, as you are my area representative and one that I have always respected to do what's in the best interest of students, parents, and teachers alike. We currently have three bills that have passed the California State Assembly and Senate and are awaiting newsome signature to sign into law. AB six-six-five permits minors twelve years and up to consent to mental health counseling, mental health treatment, and to obtain medications free of parental consent. AB nine-five-seven obligates a judge to include gender identity affirmation by a parent as part of the deciding criteria when awarding custody in family court. And finally, AB ten-seventy-eight seeks to sideline local school boards' powers to make decisions about the curriculum taught in their school district and instead follow the guidance of Sacramento bureaucrats. We cannot have a system where we lose the trust of parents by lying to them about their child. We cannot have a system where judicial courts are manipulated in such a way to inherently favor one parent over another. And we cannot have a system where parental input has no representation by our locally elected Board of Trustees. Parents have a fundamental right and constitutional right per the Fourteenth Amendment to control and direct the upbringing of their children. There is no epidemic of parents harming their children who may experience gender dysphoria. I don't know of a single parent that does not love and support their child or children, and will in fact bring their child closer if and when they realize help is needed. According to the National Library of Medication, data indicates that eighty-two percent of transgender individuals have considered killing themselves. This is from the resource PubMed. Shouldn't all parents be afforded the opportunity to help their child in such circumstances? Adoption of secrecy laws do not afford parents this opportunity. So, Mr. Otto, as my area representative, I am seeking your help tonight. I am asking that you help parents like myself that love children and parents unconditionally to initiate a parents' bill of rights policy. Six other districts have already passed a parental rights policy, and these districts are Redding, Rockland, Chino, Temecula, Orange, and Marietta. I can assure you that you will have an overwhelming amount of support from the community to adopt such measures. With your past leadership and experience, I can't think of anyone more qualified to lead such an effort. Any and all fellow board members that could get behind such an initiative would be greatly appreciated. Let's protect kids by including their parents in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on. Six, the consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item from consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? On a motion by Board Member Belt, second by Board Member Naylor, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes, and motion passes unanimously.
Seven, Student Representative Report, Ms. Eliana Juarez from El Diamante High School.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Today I'm here to share the Student Board Report. At El Diamante High School, on August twenty-ninth, El Diamante hosted their first minor senate meeting. The focus of this meeting was student feedback on the first few weeks of school. On September eighth, El Diamante hosted their fall rally. The fall rally was Scooby-Doo themed and was held to celebrate fall athletes and recognize our pick award winners. The Student Equity Forum met on August thirty-first. This is a student-led meeting that is open to all students. El Diamante is making preparations for a Candyland-themed homecoming the week of September twenty-fifth. At Golden West High School, Golden West hosted Club Rush, where all students got to join lots of different clubs, as well as enjoy some amazing food. It was a huge success. Golden West celebrated Culture of Excellence Week, where they recognized club presidents, athletes, very merry on birthdays, H O T awards, and student making a difference on campus. Golden West celebrated their first home football game with the Blazer Spirit Game, followed by a neon night for the second home game. Golden West is currently in the process of preparations for the Rio-themed homecoming the week of September eighteenth. At Mount Whitney High School on August thirty-first, Mount Whitney High School hosted their first rally, welcoming all of our students into a brand-new gym. The theme for the rally was Whitney tunes. Kids had fun watching their seniors get slimed. We are welcoming our new ASB teacher to our program, Mrs. Johnson, who just took over her new position as of September seventh. We are currently working on our homecoming, which our theme is road trip to homecoming. The Mount Whitney FFA will be going to the Tulare County Fair to showcase their animals this week. At Redwood High School, Redwood has their homecoming this week. Redwood's theme is Super Mario. Redwood has their homecoming game this upcoming Friday, where the king and queen will be crowned. Yesterday, Redwood had their homecoming rally, where the nominees gathered, and the top five senior girls and top five guys were announced for homecoming. Redwood has a lot of club meetings happening through the last two weeks, like the Treat People Kindness Club, Pickleball Club, and Just Serve Club. Redwood had their second football game last Friday. The theme was construction. Redwood had a great turnout in their student section. Redwood beat Tulare Western with a final score of seventeen to six. At Sequoia High School, they completed eye-ready testing with seventy-nine percent participation rate. ASB had a water balloon volleyball game during lunch, and to celebrate the start of NFL season, they had a football toss competition. Toby, their therapy dog, has returned to the excitement of their student body and child development. Ethnic Studies Teacher, Mrs. Sorentes, invited the Native Star Foundation. The purpose of the foundation is promoting healthy mindsets of Native American youth through cultural practices. Sequoia students participated in native songs and dance. At VCIS, VCI hosted Back to School Night on September seventh. ASB students welcomed parents and gave tours of the campus. On September twenty-eighth, VCIS tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders will be going to Trades Day, a day for career exploration at the Porterville Fairgrounds. They are excited about providing this opportunity to their many students that are interested in pursuing trade. ASB has been ramping up for our suicide awareness campaign and planning for the Harvest Dance on September thirty-third. VCIS GSA Club will be hosting its first meeting on September twenty-eighth after school on West Campus. At VTAC on September eighth, VTAC held their first dance of the year, Let's Kick It. It was a great success. Students had fun dancing and also playing in the arcade games hosted by the ASB students. In support of suicide prevention, VTAC ASB will be passing out handmade friendship bracelets to all the students on campus. Along with the freshman bracelets, students will be highly encouraged to contribute to the VTAC VSD-inspired September Heart Wall, located at the entrance of the gym. VTAC FFA students hosted their first meeting September fifth and shared that they are participating in the Tulare Fair in showcasing an array of animals like pigs, lambs, and chickens. This Friday, VTAC Spanish Club will be hosting various activities and festivities to honor the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, and that is all I have for today.
Thank you. I have a question for you. Did you get slimed?
Um, that was at Mount Whitney High School.
Oh, was that Mount Whitney? Oh, I guess you didn't get slimed, then. Hey, uh, Board Member Report, uh, Dr. Vegas.
Thank you, President Gamoyen, and, uh, thank you, Eliana. Is this your last meeting with us?
Yes.
Oh, if we could take a moment to give Eliana a round of applause for. And a wonderful job representing all of our students here at VUSD. So thank you for serving in that capacity. Um, just to keep it brief, I had the opportunity to, uh, do some site visits with my fellow trustees, including President Gamoyen and Board Member Belt, where we took some time to visit Creekside, our community school, uh, where we got to see some awesome things with Principal Burgess and the amazing staff. And I want to give a, a major shout out to our staff at Creekside, um, and really just everyone buying into the vision and mission of serving students um, who are sometimes facing the most exceptional circumstances in their home life at, at school, outside of school. Um, and a, a great example of that is they held their first Back to School Night. Um, and, you know, they had tacos, they had music. Uh, they had parents and families. There was a jumper out there. Um, and I just think that, that speaks to the work that is already happening uh, and the leadership that's already happening at that site. So thank you to all of our staff, uh, all of our students, of course, all of our teachers, and all of our leadership at Creekside. Um, and so we're looking to continue to see that site develop and grow. And our students, uh, coming back to and returning to their, uh, sites, you know, better prepared, better connected, and ready to learn and engage. Um, other than that, we also had the opportunity to tour Ridgeview Middle School with Dr. Gonzalez, but I'll, uh, I'll let my colleagues speak to that, because I don't want to take up all the space. Thank you.
Dr. Otto.
Okay, so I had a Career Technical Education Day kind of thing today, and it, it gives me a, a moment to kind of praise what's gone on there, but also to reflect for a little bit. So I attended the Leaders of Tomorrow, um, event today at Mount Whitney High School. That was for the, um, Academy of Health Sciences. And good, strong academy. What, what occurred there was kids sat down with professionals in the field and learned what the professionals did. So they get a chance to, to explore the depth and breadth of what, uh, professionals do in health sciences or in health fields. Uh, following that, I attended. Following that, I attended with Board Member Belt and Board Member Gamoyen the VPPI meeting by say a Partners in Education, which goes way back, back into the 90s, I believe, for a basically a level, a meeting regarding the direction of OKED programs, CTE programs, pardon me showing my age, in the district. And another chance to look at CTE from a different perspective. In the morning with kids, in the afternoon with business leaders to see what we can do to help our kids better serve local community business. And as a former shop teacher, it caused me to reflect for a couple of minutes while I was sitting in the New Time Meeting today about how some of these things came together. None of this is new stuff, but what's unique about what's going on now is that the district and staff and teachers have embraced a broader approach to the work. When I was a drafting teacher at Mount Whitney back in 1987, I had to do those things myself. I brought in a group of advisors and we talked about stuff and set direction, all that. I did that and my three peers at the other two high schools, two peers at the other two high schools were doing similar kinds of things. They weren't coordinated. Today's work was coordinated both at the kid level and also at the community advisory level. And that's, that's all good. It provides our kids with a better perspective on what's going on, provides us with more impact for the work that the district does educating the kids, which are the future of the community. But as I was sitting in the meeting today, I reflected back to my time as a teacher and how this stuff happened way back then. And I'm going to bring up two names, two people who recently passed in the last two weeks that I'm sure most of you guys don't know, probably even the names, although Mrs. Naylor will remember these folks. Terry Garrett was an assistant principal at Mount Whitney High School when I started there, great lady. I've had a big heart and understood vocational education as we called it back then and the value it could bring to kids. She was a home ec teacher, home ec, who calls it that anymore? No, it's Consumer and Family Studies because, you know, we have to have a bright, shiny, long name for stuff. But she understood the value of CTE and what it brought to kids. And then at the district level sought to broaden that impact. She brought into the, well, she worked with another person, a Golden West teacher on special assignment, B Socksman. And I know you remember B. She started off, I think, at Redwood and then moved to Golden West when it opened. B was the person who handled the money, but also handled the technical stuff. So, the vision for CTE got funneled or got addressed two ways. One with a broader picture, that was kind of Terry's job. And then one with a person who made the details work and made them happen consistently so that we had as much coordination across the schools in the district as we could in these shop, home ec, ag, et cetera programs. That is the origin for the work that I saw or observed today. And I'm not saying that it was better and brighter then because it was really a lot of work. It's much better now, but all of this stuff goes back deep into the past of Icelia Unified. I came here back in the 80s because this was the one district that was hiring shop teachers, which is what I was. And they were also protecting program, making sure that things didn't get cut, that things were supported so that the programs could continue and serve kids. And that's still the case today. We kept things here that other districts cut when times got hard because it was an easy cut to make. It's not an easy cut to make in reality because it's a short-sighted thing to do. But this district has always had the foresight to make sure that we, the things that we invested in were good for kids and that we maintain them. So, I just wanted to touch for a minute on Terry Garrett and B Socksman and their contribution to the district and their help in getting us to where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. That was nice. Board Member Belt.
Thank you, President Gamoyen. As we have highlighted principals a little bit with Mr. Thompson's report and hearing from them, I'd like to thank you again. Mrs. Aguilera at Ivanhoe got to visit her campus and see her vision as a new principal in our district. Mr. Franco of Valley Oak, Mr. Gonzalez at Ridgeview, Mr. Burgess at Creekside and Mrs. Crabtree at Crestwood. These are all principals that we had to, the opportunity to walk alongside for an hour or an hour and a half, depending on how much time Mr. Schrum had, and then engage and see the engagement of their teachers and students in many different aspects, whether it be special ed or kindergartners who were putting their blocks together with the alphabet or it went on and on. But it doesn't happen in a void. It happens because everyone's there focused. And I want to thank all of them because they gave us a little bit of interrupting their time, but actually then a taste of the day and the life of their school site. I accidentally finished washing my car and saw some activity across the street. We don't, we don't like to exacerbate the address, but where our music instruments get repaired and stored. And I've gone by there before, but I couldn't get in. The door was locked. So, I ran over there, well, drove over and got a wonderful tour of what they're doing. Not only is it a place to store, to work with, but to repair, rebuild instruments. I don't know any school district that has that kind of facility, let alone the drive to make sure that every student who wants an instrument has one, a functioning one. And then to actually see the excitement of Mr. Cantu of the future as we did this summer and more in the future of having students actually get a hands-on how-to-repair-instrument kind of experience, whether you call it an internship or a summer employment, one or the other or both. But it can just continue to grow because he has the passion to help pass that along, a lot of which he learned because of necessity. It wasn't because he was trained anywhere. He just wanted to make sure it happened. The last thing I wanted to highlight is I enjoyed watching Dr. Vegas play soccer on the new turf. As we were, we had the biggest pair of scissors I've ever seen actually cut that ribbon. And the excitement of the community, of those families and students there, they combined it with Back to School Night. So, it was a captive audience and they were very excited though to welcome as well as be encouraged by all of us that this is your new grounds. And there's a lot of amazing hours of use and opportunity in a very, a significant investment on the school district's part. So, thank you for the leadership there that they now have a useful grounds to play year-round.
Board Member Casper Saleno.
No report.
Or Bebra Naylor.
Trying to make mine short and sweet. I also had the opportunity to visit two sites along with Board Member Belt and our Assistant Superintendent Thompson. I just appreciate the principals taking the time out of their busy schedule because I know what it's like at a site. Just to take us around, you know, Mrs. Aguilera at Ivanhoe. The kids were excited. You know, there's learning going on when they want to share what they're learning. And so, when we walked in, they all waved and they wanted to explain what they were working on. That was amazing. And at Green, at Valley Oak, Mr. Franco is so proud of the new science labs and they're beautiful, done beautifully. And it just, it warms my heart knowing that our kids have the school and the facilities to do and to learn with the state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art equipment. I also attended the Little Garden Party fundraiser for Green Acres and I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Kristen Corliss for doing an awesome job. It was a great event, a little hot, but it was a great event. I hope you raised lots of money because again, that goes through to our VAPA, which is, you know, I just am so, such a proponent of VAPA and CTE. And I want to thank Board Member Otto for going down memory lane because I too am a CTE teacher. And I just think that it's so important to have those classes for students to gain those skills and to see them out in the community. It just, you know, working and being, and being happy at what they're doing and knowing that they learned some of those skills at high school just is, to me, the best thing of education. Thank you.
Board Clerk Gabby.
So, yes, ditto to a lot of what was said. Site visits are always the best, seeing kids learning. It's why we're here. And the Green Acres Little Theater, you know, they really just, to see that over time continue, it's just, it all goes back to a group of dedicated and committed people and they really keep that program going. And also just kind of shout-out to the, all of our ag students fair this week. And oh my gosh, the hours they put in, also the hours the parents put in to, you know, early morning driving out and feeding the animals to taking care of them. And, and we just have some amazing students in, in FFA. And if we could get Toby, the therapy dog, to come to our board meetings, now, there we go.
That'd be nice. And we can't forget Walter, the therapy horse. Named after, named after me. Yeah. So, so I got to do some site visits and I was able to go to Crestwood, Creekside, Ridgeview. And it was so fun to see principals bursting with vision. They're just really excited about what's happening at their sites. I want to thank Mrs. Sepuentes for the Patriots Day. You gave a tear-jerker of a speech and I want to thank you for that. And just the way you're instilling that patriotism and being proud of being American in, in your students, that was really wonderful to see. So, thank you. Yeah, so that's my report.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I will work on Toby, the therapy dog. I could use him on some days as I'm sure all of us know. That'd be awesome. I do have to make a mention of, I forget which school is doing Candy Land, but that is one of my all-time favorite kids' games that I loved to play as a kid. So, I may just have to make a visit.
I can send you the dress-up days, like.
I'll receive the email, yes. But I do want to echo or bring to light an item that was on our Consent Agenda tonight. And that was the approval of an architect to begin the modernization for Houston Elementary. And as many been on that campus multiple times and I've had teachers say, well, when, when is our modernization coming? You know, we're, you know, a school, one of the oldest in the district, right? We just made a great investment in Highland. And so, you know, it's always been there, right? But these things are processes and it takes time. And I remember a teacher on that campus when I was there this year, but when are we going to see something tangible? And, you know, although, you know, not to get people too excited, you know, it is a process, right? It's going to take a while to do the architect. It takes, you know, this is a two to three-year or so process. But that process is now underway. And I said, just wanted to highlight something that was on the Consent Agenda because I think that's important for that community. And I know that, you know, the principal and the staff, you know, are aware of that and look forward to great things for that school and that community as we go forward. Also want to announce to our community to be on the lookout. We talked about a series of engagement opportunities with our board and we're excited to announce conversations with our board. Will occur late October, early November. Our board members will be going out to the community, holding a conversation. And we're excited about that and the opportunity for dialogue, for our board members to have dialogue with our community. And so, be on the lookout. We'll be announcing later this month those events as well. And very excited about next week will be our first State of the Schools, State of the District event. We're going to, I think it's going to be live-streamed, be lookout for information. And it's just going to be an amazing opportunity to showcase all of the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. It's okay to toot our horns sometimes, right? You need to show what's happening. When you have a community that has a strong school system, it attracts business, it attracts jobs, it attracts confidence in a community. And so, I'm really excited about hopefully beginning what will be a yearly tradition at our first State of the District, which will be next week. And so, looking forward to that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to 10.1 Recommended Expulsions. May I have a motion to approve the recommended expulsions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Casper Saleno, second by Board Member Otto, on favor.
Student Board Representative abstains and motion passes unanimously.
10.2 Recommended Reviews Continued Expulsion. May I have a motion to approve the recommended reviews continued expulsion?
A motion.
I'll second.
Okay, on a motion by Board Member Vegas, second by Board Member Casper Saleno, on favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Student Board Member should have abstained.
Student Board Member abstains.
Yeah, sorry. Come on, Mr. Thompson. 10.2 Recommended, no, now I'm not doing right. 11.1 Fiscal Year 2022-23 Un-audited Actual Report, Chief Business Officer, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gamoyen, members of the boards, Superintendent Schrum. So, the item tonight is our 2223 Un-audited Actuals Report. This is the final staff report and accounting for the 2223 fiscal year. We'll come back in January. That'll be presented by our actual auditors with our officially audited report. And so, this is, this is our finish strong report as we finish through the summertime, closing out the books. So, thanks to our, our budget and our finance and our purchasing teams who close out the books throughout the year. This is kind of their culminating event. So, this is also, as we've explained, how the board puts the financial resources behind the beliefs and commitments and our commitment to student learning and soon our strategic plan, because this is how in the strategic plan the board will provide resources to make sure that those initiatives become reality. So, our agenda tonight, we're going to review what the audit, what the un-audited actuals report is, do some high-level comparisons and then talk about some next steps. So, what are the un-audited actuals? These are our financial statements for last fiscal year. It's the final accounting of all of the financial activity and it's a point in time. So, it's as of June 30th. So, when we talk about things like carryover, those are things that happen. They might get approved prior to June 30th, but because we close out on that day, they might actually get paid for in another fiscal year. So, we'll talk more about that when we get to our interim reporting. It's required to be filed by September 15th with the county office. So, we are at our deadline. And then it's used by our external auditors again to prepare our audited financial report. So, what does it mean? We have three questions about learning, right? What are you learning? Why? How do we know? So, this is, these are the three questions for, did I get that right? So, these are the questions we ask about this report. Are we living within our means? So, do we spend more money than we receive? Are we deficit spending? Was the district able to meet our required reserve or economic, for economic uncertainties of 3%? And are each of the district's operating funds also operating in a surplus and fiscally solvent? And happily, the answer to all these questions is yes. We are meeting our reserves. We're not deficit spending this year and we are also solvent in each of our district funds. So, we've talked about our accounting cycle. So, we're here in September. And again, we'll come back in January with the final reporting on this year. Jumping right into the charts, the data. So, this is general fund revenues comparing 2122 to 2223. And you see a lot, the difference, there's lots of difference amounts there and there are very large variances. And we've had a lot of activity in the last year with one-time dollars. But you see, just starting with the top, our local control funding formula, we received increase of COLA of 6% in 2223 along with some additional base funds. So, you see a larger increase there than typical. On the federal side, all of the ESRA funds are one-time funding is still coming in. And this is the last year, current, the current year is the last year that we'll be spending those ESRA dollars. And then one-time funds around those block grants for learning recovery, arts and music instructional materials block grant. And then other local has to do with increased interest earnings again because we've had a lot of cash come in from, from some of these one-time funds. And this is what it looks like in a chart, in a pie chart. So, typically LCFF sources are over 80% of our, our budget, but because of all the one-time funding, there's some differences there in what those amounts are. Our general fund expenditure comparison, again, large variances. And we see the cost of living adjustment that was provided to staff along with one-time payment that was, that was approved in 2223. Increases in retirement cost as well as increases around our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, the ELOP programs and, and one-time fundings. We did have a slight decrease in our other outgoing capital. That was because we made a large property purchase, the Grace Church in 2122. But otherwise, revenues exceeding our expenditures, and this is probably my favorite chart. But this is how we spend our dollar. And so, if you look at the expenditures here, most of our dollars are spent on staff salaries and benefits, over 76% in our total general fund. And that, that varies between unrestricted and restricted. Sometimes that's upwards of 80%, but again, lots of one-time money being paid on other things, being paid for, paying for other things besides salaries and benefits. And so, that's come down a little bit. On, on just our unrestricted fund balances, we start looking at reserves and funds that we have set aside. So, total revenues, 377 million. Expenditures and contributions left a net increase, so an increase in our overall fund balance. Expenditures and contributions left a net increase, so an increase in our overall fund balance of just over two million. Beginning fund balance was sixty-two million, and we ended at sixty-five point two nine million. And so, forty million of that is in our reserve. We also have a reserve for LCAP as well as a pension. So, those reserve balances equal out to that ten percent. So, we are pretty much at the state limit for what we can hold as reserve. And we talked about earlier about preserving programs, and that's the reason for having that reserve level at the highest amount that we can. And then some other carryover balances, LCAP and things that we'll talk about more at First Interim Report in December. And then our, what we consider are unassigned, but the three hundred and thirty-one thousand is just not assigned to any other balance. In our other district funds, I won't go through them all, but you can see they all have positive ending balances. Facility funds typically spend more than what comes in because we issue bonds, for example, and then we spend those bonds down throughout the year. Total fund balances, both general fund and all other funds, of just over three hundred and seventy-five million. So, our next steps is we'll send this report off to our county office. They will in turn send it off to CDE for approvals. Our external auditors will review this report, and they'll come in October and provide us with the final report in December. And that will come back to the board in January, and then our report is officially closed. So, with that, hang around for any questions.
Is there any public comment? Is there any board comment or questions? I like all that positive. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Oh, we need to, yeah, sorry. May I have a motion?
You sure can. Motion to approve this most important and best report of the year.
Yes.
I second it.
Okay, so, a motion by Dr. Otto, second by Board Member Naylor to recommend reviews. No, what am I doing? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong place. To have a motion to approve the unaudited actual reports. I'm tired today. Sorry.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
I also need to shout out to Ms. Kyla Johnson. She's sitting out here because she's the one who puts all these reports together. I didn't give her the.
Eleven point two, Exemption from Required Expenditures Classroom Teacher Salaries. Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, President Gamoyen, members of the board, and Superintendent Schrum. This is a new item. We have not had to bring this before you in the past. It's an exemption that we're requesting to be filed with TCOE from an education code requirement that's actually kind of outdated and not really consistent with how we operate schools today. The requirement is that for unified school districts to spend over fifty-five percent of their expenses, of their funds, fifty-five percent of their expenditures on classroom salaries and benefits. And so, we have been meeting this kind of barely over the last couple of years. Well, a lot of districts have not met it, and so, they've filed these waivers. This is the first time that we're requesting a waiver. Our actual was just over fifty-one percent. But there's, and there's a lot of different reasons why some of that has to do with some of the one-time funds that we receive. But also, just since the LCFF and the LCAP came into place, a lot of supports going towards more addressing whole child, so social work and counseling and behavior intervention that is not considered classroom salaries and benefits. And so, we're asking that this report be approved so we can send it off to the county for their approval.
Public comment, board comment, questions? May I have a motion to approve the application for exemption from required expenditures, classroom teacher salaries?
All motion.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Casper Saleno, but a second by Board Member Otto, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Eleven point three, Warrant List. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, so this is our routine item to approve the warrants between July twenty-eighth and August twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-three.
May I have a motion to, well, first of all, is there any public comment? I'm discombobulated today. Any board comment, questions? May I have a motion to accept the warrant list? All motion.
All second.
On a motion by Board Clerk Gabby, second by Board Member Casper Saleno, all in favor. Come on.
I see you pressing it. Student Board Representative votes yes. Motion passes six zero with one abstention by Dr. Vegas.
Thank you, everybody. I think we need to adjourn.